All right.
Ready?
We're all set.
We'll call this meeting of the DeKalb County Council Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, in session. We'll begin with an opening prayer by Bob Kraft.
Let's pray. Father God, I just thank you for today and every day of life. Serve you to talk about which we live. We just pray today to keep our choice. One more time.
Amen. Would you please stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rick Collins did say he may be a few minutes late, but he will be definitely.
Okay.
Okay, we have three sets of minutes from the July 9th and 10th and July 31st meetings. We can do them individually. If we wish, if we have consensus from the council, we can do them all in one. So what is the council's wish? Okay, do we have consensus to do them as one? Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to any of them? Hearing none. I'll offer the question. We have a motion. Do we accept? So moved by Amy Dembski. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Second by Amy Prosser. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the July 9th, 10th, and July 31st meetings signify by saying aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have a couple of additionals here for approval. The first one comes from the treasurer, and it is from the county general fund, Fund Number 1001, Account Number 11499. The account title is replacement. What is E-E?
Employee.
Employee. And the amount requested is $16,595. Was this included in the annual budget request? And the answer is no. Excuse me, no. And the reason it was not included was the need was not anticipated until recently. How will this appropriation be used? Requested money will be used to hire a replacement employee to begin training before current employee retires. Specific cost of the item, excuse me, $16,595. And how was this cost determined? It's the weekly salary times 16 weeks. Is this a reoccurring expense? And the answer is no. Will other expenditures be necessary? The answer is no. Was it discussed with the liaison? Yes. Via email, and liaison is Amy Dembski. Do we have any questions? Amy, do you have anything you'd like to add to this? Okay. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none. If not, do we have a motion to approve? A motion by Amy Dembski to approve the amount of $16,595. Do we have a second? Second by Rick Ring. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval is granted. The next one we have comes from probation. And it is, the department is Probation Addiction Treatment Court. The fund name is Problem Solving Court, Fund Number 9157, Account Number 33900. Account title is Testing Services. The amount requested is $1,443.04. Was this included in the annual budget request? And the answer is no. The reason not included, additional grant funds were located by IOCS. How will this appropriation be used? Is payment for ATC participants drug tests. Specific cost of the item is anywhere from $11.77 to $13.39. How was the cost determined? Price per test according to Redwood Toxicology. Is this a reoccurring expense? The answer is yes. Will other expenditures be necessary? The answer is no. Was it discussed with the liaison? Yes. And that was emailed to Dave Yard. And I don't have anything else to add to it. Is there any other questions or anything?
Is this an ongoing grant coming in, or is this something they apply for?
He's right there.
You said you had got another grant for this. Is that what you said?
This was.
Okay. It seems like in that 9157 fund, you have plenty of money in there.
Well, that money is already there.
It's already there.
Because it was from prior.
Well, I said the balance is pretty good in that account. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, for now.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ryan. Do we have a motion to approve? Rick Collins. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Van Wyge. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the questions. All those in favor of approving the $1,443.04 for the Probation Addiction Treatment Court, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval is granted. Okay, moving on. We do have a couple of transfers here that will need council approval. The first one is from Small Claims, the amount of $4,000 from the county general fund. Fund number is 10. Let me make sure I've got the right one here. 1001. The amount to be transferred is $4,000. It is from Account Number 11335. The account title is Small Claims Deputy to Account Number 44430. Account title is Equipment. The amount is $4,000. Why is this transfer needed? Money counter for Civil Division advised by liaison Amy Dembski to try to do a transfer this year instead of putting it in my budget for 2026. Will additional appropriation be requested due to the transfer? The answer is no. Was it discussed with the liaison? And that answer is yes. And that was Amy Dembski. Amy, do you have anything else you'd like to add? So when you're talking about a money counter, is this like a bill counter, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Got a question?
Yeah.
Was this, you said it was needed for the Civil Division. Was the old one broke, or did they have just a problem with it, or was it?
The treasurer's office.
Okay.
I think they wanted an additional. I think they wanted to have two, one as a backup or possibly in a different office. I can't remember.
And this also will notify you that if a bill's bad, right?
I can. Yep. Yep, it sure can.
Someone back there?
Thanks, Tony.
Oh, you're hiding. Okay. This will tell you if a 50 or 100 is bad, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. She just messaged me. She said they currently have one in criminal, but they do not have one in civil. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Amy Dembski. Do we have a second? By Rick Ring. Hearing nothing. No further discussion. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the $4,000 transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer is granted. Okay, the next one comes to us from the prosecutor's office. Fund name is from the county general fund, Fund Number 1001. The amount to be transferred is $2,500, and it is from Account Number 1001 days 11272 days 000 days 008. The account title is Deputy Prosecutor Number 5, being transferred to Account Number 1001 days 32780 days 000 days 006. The account title is Other Services Fees. The amount is $2,500. Why is this transfer needed? This transfer will cover the cost of the fast pass associated with ongoing operations of the Axon Justice System. Will additional appropriation be requested due to this transfer? The answer is no. Was it discussed with the liaison? As yes. And that's Amy Dembski. Amy, anything else you'd like to add? Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Amy Dembski. Do we have a second? Second by Rick Collins. Offer the question. All those in favor of transferring $2,500 in the prosecutor's office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer is completed, so has been approved. Okay, the last one we have comes from 4D Department, and the fund is from County General, Fund Number 1001. The amount to be transferred is $200, and it is from Account Number 34295. Title is TTE. And what does that stand for, Susan? TTE account in the 4D. Pardon?
Good job.
So, good job. Thank you, sir. And the account number is 22737.
Okay, that's wrong. Let me look at it. If it was a three account, it would be, let me look. Oh, yes. Yes. It's coming from travel, going to this next one.
Okay, to the notary reimbursement?
Yes.
For $200. Okay. Why is this transfer needed? It's a new account funding. Will additional appropriation be requested due to this transfer? And the answer is no. Was it discussed with the liaison? And that answer is no. Do we have any further questions on the $200 transfer? Hearing none, we'll accept.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Amy?
So are we setting up a new?
That's what it says. It's new account funding, so.
It's because they had somebody become a notary. They need to reimburse for notary supplies. It's not, yes, it's like training because you're learning to do it, but you're not paying a service, and that's paid from an account that starts with a three. So we're paying for a supply like a stamp or a certificate, so we need to pay for it out of an account that starts with a two. Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
Any other further questions? Hearing none. We'll accept a motion for approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Bill Van Wyge to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Rick Ring. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the $200 transfer in the title 4D Department signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer is approved. Okay, that's the last of our transfers that.
I got questions, Susan.
Yep.
Wasn't there one in here that we had approved for the Health Department? Or didn't she get it in in time?
There's a nonapproval on here.
I know there's a nonapproving one, but that wasn't the one she called me on.
Okay, so if it is not here, then that means it was not submitted.
On time.
On time for this meeting.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Randy Fox in the airport. Welcome, Randy.
You should have received in your packet our briefing document. And the first item on it is our new logo. We had about eight to choose from. One of them looked like an angry something, seagull attacking us. We chose not to approve that one. We wanted something that was obvious, but not overt, I guess. And this one seems to answer it with the Auburn DeKalb Executive Airport. And it's still going to be the Airport Board doing business as Auburn DeKalb Executive Airport. So we really haven't changed ownership. We're intending to change ownership or anything like that, but just a new logo with the 7,000-foot runway. We're hoping to attract much more traffic. That's our goal at this point. The taxiway process progress is moving. They had some issues with stabilization underneath the concrete because we've got airplanes like I used to fly that weigh 1,600, 1,800 pounds up to a business jet that, you know, may weigh 10,000 pounds. And the taxiway has to support any or all of those. So our engineering company from BFNS has been active in monitoring and found that the compaction and support wasn't there, so they made them dig it out and start over. So it's a little bit behind, but it's moving forward, and we'll get that taxiway done yet this year. The lighting portion, kind of cool. It's going back to all LED now. The lights used to be 220. Had a huge transformer that ran the lights. The bulbs were expensive. They burned out a lot. We're going to LED lighting, which is much more economical and will probably last or outlast all the rest of us in this room. So we're looking forward to getting that done as well. On our budget, you can see we had a 0.05% decrease in our levy for this upcoming year. I think over the last 12 years, we've had a 0.33 increase in our levy cumulatively over those 12 years. We're doing our best to keep our budget down. We had a pretty significant increase in insurance. Like, you guys are going to be surprised by that. We were able to absorb that into the budget and not make a large increase for this upcoming year. And then anyone who's interested, you're welcome to come out tour the facility a bit. Have lunch on Friday, which will be next Friday for the, our board meeting. Lunch goes till 1:00, and our board meeting's at 1:00 o'clock upstairs in the terminal building. And also then, last but not least, our activity for July. We had 1,600, or 1,673 landings, takeoffs for the airport, which is up where we were hoping it's going to be and then higher as things goes on. You can see the number of business jets, helicopters, multi-engine, and single-engine seems to be our bread and butter as far as takeoffs and landings, but all those larger vehicles and especially the jets consume a fair amount of fuel, which we sell them. At a profit. And I'll take any questions.
Does the install the new taxiway or the extended taxiway, I should say, have you had to close the runways for that, or are you able to function most days?
There's occasional closures when they're down toward the end of the threshold, but those are all, there's a process out there with the FAA called a Notice to Airmen. Of the, of course, the acronym NOTAM, N-O-T-A-M. And so when we have a situation where the runway may be restricted, they put a NOTAM out, and if you're going to fly into the Auburn Airport, you're supposed to check and see if there are any active NOTAMs out there. And that would tell you if you have to call in ahead of time or whether the airport is functioning normally. If it's functioning normally, there's no notice. If there's a notice, there might be a restriction. Russ, when they were doing the runway itself, Russ was listening to the radio, and some guy said, "I'm approaching to land. The runway's closed." It was supposed to be closed for like seven days, and he runs down there with the lights on on the truck, and he's trying to talk to the guy on the radio, and he goes right over his head and lands. We're fortunate, nothing happened, but somebody didn't check their notice. But we tried to keep an eye on that, and the guys were proactive, trying to stop him from doing that to make sure nobody was injured. But as this one turns out, it was just an interesting story, and nobody got hurt.
Did he get to take off after he landed?
I don't know. I would assume so, but yeah, I wasn't there. Russ related that at the board meeting.
Anything else? Have any questions for Randy? That's a very nice logo.
Yeah, yeah. We had, like I say, we had eight to choose from, and this one was, you know, not gaudy, not understated. It gives us, and the A puts this up front of the alphabet to make it easier to find us, I think, is the, was one of the goals. And so it serves multiple purposes, and I think we're happy with it. It was a long discussion.
I was going to say that, Randy. It's been a pleasure to watch how you guys have walked through this process the last year and thoroughly and with a lot of input and did not rush any of the decisions when there was probably some pressure to do so, but you guys did it in a great way. Your legal counsel walked through some of this with you incredibly well. Your engineers have been just outstanding in what they're doing out there, so.
I've been, it's, you know, interesting, having been a pilot in the past, being on this other end where administratively operating an airport is a whole completely different ballgame. And interesting, to say the least.
Hearing nothing else, Randy. Thank you. Great work. Appreciate it. Thank you again. Okay, moving on. We have a 2025 County Salary and Wage Ordinance Amendment. Susan, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Not really. I'll just go through them here. So the first one for the Sheriff's Department, the SRO position. We have a deputy that has 11-plus years of experience, so where his wage falls on the deputy matrix was different than the prior SRO person. So the salary ordinance needed to be increased to reflect his hourly rate. So that's that one. The second one is the part-time animal control officer. She started in, I don't know, May or June-ish, and the sheriff's office, they have been paying her as a, or paying that position as a qualified professional in a coma A category, which is $23.49 per hour. When the study, WIS study came back, they classified that position as a civilian pole B. That hourly rate is 2213. So if you guys approve this, the sheriff, I mean, I don't, the sheriff has already been paying her the 2349, so that's why I put that note in there. And then the Sunny Meadows matron one, that was just my error. We already approved that basically, except for I forgot to change the account number, so I'm correcting my typo and making it official.
Okay, anything else? Bobby, have anything to add? Okay.
So are we looking at increasing the category or?
For that animal one?
Yeah.
So, no. I guess the decision for you guys on that one maybe would be if you leave it with the classification from WIS, with the knowledge that that position, specific position in that category is going to have the higher rate. Or if you guys choose to do the WIS category of the coma A that the qualified professional falls in, in the sheriff's department, then that would equal what coma A is, the 2349. They don't have their rates. They're just saying that they think it's a civilian pole B.
Yeah, our rate's 22.
I have. I'm just providing the information.
They did not. So effectively, we're being asked to pay this particular part-time person over the normal salary that would be in that category?
Correct. And I cannot answer what qualified professional, like what that description looks like or anything. Like, I mean, in my mind, if the person is specialized to deal with animals, then they're some type of qualified professional, but that's, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Do you want to pass this? And I'll see if I can ask the sheriff. Well, right now, I don't think either of them are on, but I'm going to find out.
I feel like it's a little tricky because we're being asked to pass this ordinance, which involves maybe some other ones that are very clear-cut, but then this one is, well, it's just outside of the norm. And it feels weird to say yes on the other two, but no on a specific one that maybe we don't agree with.
Do you want me to take that off of there and leave the two easy ones on the ordinance OCC6 and put the other one on its own?
That would be my preference. I'd just see.
Okay, we'll need.
So can you guys move on to something else so that I can do this?
Sure. Okay. Well, we're going to need your expertise on the next one, on the nonbinding reviews. Susan?
Well, you have, you should have the recorder's one to do. There's a resolution that, or the ordinance that ends in OCC7.
The which now? I'm sorry.
Every year, Lita has to do the sworn statement, and we have to do an ordinance because she uses some of her perpetuation money to supplement wages in, kind of, for her budget. So we have to do this every year. So we have to do this every year. Correct. This is for 26's budget.
Yeah, I did not get a copy of that one, but that's okay. So what do we need to do? We need to approve this ordinance here? And everybody has a copy of the reviews for the budget cycle, starting with Butler Township and?
That's separate.
This is different, okay. Because I'm sorry, I did not get a copy of this one then, so.
Okay. So she has to provide the sworn statement?
Mm-hmm.
And then also?
Okay. Was I to have a copy of that or not?
That's right here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, at its finest there. Okay, Susan, so to proceed with this here, do we need to read the sworn statement? Or do we just need to call for the question for approval?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions here on the non-binding review, the sworn statement from Lita Hlinger?
Okay, non-binding is not this.
This is not, this is separate, okay.
Nothing to do with this recorder ordinance that we're doing right now.
Okay, this is the recorder ordinance, I'm sorry. I think that's capital idea. Do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
We have a second by Bill Van Y. Any further discussion? So, okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the recorder's ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Recorder's ordinance has been approved. Thank you, Lita.
On first reading.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we okay on that, Don? All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Rick to suspend the rules on, for second and third reading. We have a second by Bill Van Y. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of suspending the rules? We're not doing the second and third reading, we're suspending the rules.
Yeah.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved for suspending the rules. Now, do we have a motion to approve on second and third reading? By Rick Collins' motion. Do we have a second? Second by Amy Damski. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the recorder's ordinance on second and third reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Motion is carried. Okay. Now we move to the non-binding reviews. Correct, Jody, Susan, non-binding reviews?
Yes, those are next. I sent you guys late last night an email with what I have printed out in front of you. I did not print all of this paperwork for you. So every year, you guys have to do this. I've asked every year why and what you're supposed to do. But it's just statute that you have to do it. So max levies are provided by DLGF. And you just look at them and decide, I guess, if you're okay with them, although we can't change them because DLGF gives them to us. I asked other counties what they do, and they said their councils look at the numbers, and they just say that they recommend the units to stay at or below the max levies. So it's up to you guys on what you do. I did a synopsis page, so you guys could easily see it because this is a lot of information. And if there's a question mark on one of the budget areas, it's just because they don't have their budget in Gateway yet, which it's not due yet, so that's not like a negative. Yes, it has to be done the first meeting in August every year.
This whole thing has worked for a year. But the legislature say fine tax rate and it's never worked. They did away with your ability to do anything about it. But now they want to at least make sure that the county council sees what these budgets are, tax rates are. No matter where you live in the county, you're paying your school tax, your township tax, city tax, county tax, all these things. One of the county councils that has some type of review of that, but they can't do anything about it today. Now, what's going to happen in the next few years is that with the option in the acceleration of property taxes, so you can pass local option income tax. So help, number one, there's a local option income tax for fire D and S. Passed here and distributed among the different departments. Ability for this group. The one, the two. For the population. Base district. So as we move forward over the next couple of years through, one, we're going, the county council is going to have more and more say over the total county tax. Taxation is up for over 35. Corona. For them or about them, but everybody else will all to the county council. Us. But you can't go out. You couldn't do just one, couldn't do something just for Butler or just for Corona or just for St. John's. Whatever you do, you have to do it for everybody. So that's something.
Comes to the solid waste district, I think we're going to have to have the cooperation from the other three counties that are members of that solid waste district. Because I don't, I don't believe that DeKalb County would want to pass a tax that would help them if LaGrange, Stuben, and Noble County didn't turn around and do exactly the same thing to help that solid waste district. So it puts a lot more responsibility on the county council for our local financing. So with that being said, there's not much you can do about what Susan's given us today. Just make this simple motion and pass it on.
Do we have a motion?
I will make that motion. Do you want me to read all of this, or?
We'll discuss in a second, Amy. You have questions?
I had a question. So we're being asked to recommend, sorry, we got this last night about 7:00. And I haven't had a chance to read it. So this is requesting that we just simply pass what they're, what the townships are requesting, that they just don't go over the maximum amount of levy that they?
You're not passing anything to do with their budget because they're non-binding.
Correct.
So in reality, no matter what you say here is just a recommendation, and they don't even have to listen to it.
You're just giving advice. And they don't have, like Susan says, you don't have, they don't have to follow it.
It's literally because, I had given you guys the example of our motion last year. It's literally because statute says you guys have to review it every year. And so that's what we have to do.
Basically, the way I look at it is that we looked at it. Because no matter what we say, they still have to go through the Indy to get whatever they want to pass.
Right.
This, all this is basically saying that all we're doing is that we saw it, we looked at it. Because no matter whether we say no or yes, they're just going to throw that out. They're going to look at what the actual numbers are, correct?
Correct. And the numbers that were provided are from DLGF, Department Local Government Finance. It's not numbers that the unit or myself have come up with. It is what they are telling us those numbers are and the max levies that those units can raise for their budget. But that's where we're at.
All right. I'll make this, I'll make this motion. According to IC 6-1 dot 1-17-3.6, the county fiscal body shall review the estimated levy limits and the distribution of property taxes reduced by credits provided by the DLGF for each taxing unit. The county council must review the information and make its recommendation about the action proposed by the unit. County council's recommendation is non-binding, which means that the unit of government does not have to follow the recommendations. Auditor Sleeper shall distribute a copy of these minutes once approved to all taxing units. Auditor Sleeper provided the information to be reviewed prior to the meeting that included the following units. Butler Township, Concord Township, Fairfield Township, Franklin Township, Grant Township, Jackson Township, Kaiser Township, Newville Township, Richland Township, Spencer Township, Smithfield Township, Troy Township, Union Township, Wilmington Township, Auburn Civil City, Garrett Civil City, Corona Civil Town, Butler Civil City, Altona Civil Town, Ashley Civil Town, St. Joe's Civil Town, Waterloo Civil Town, DeKalb County Eastern Community School, DeKalb County Central United School, Auburn Eckhart Library, Garrett Kaiser Butler Community School, Butler Carnegie Public Library, Garrett Public Library, and Waterloo Public Library. I make a motion that we approve this non-binding resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob Kraft. Any further discussion? Amy?
I'm just, I'm going to vote no simply because I've not had sufficient time to review the information. I understand what's being said, but I just haven't had the time to review. And I would prefer that we have it much earlier than the night before the meeting to review. So I will be voting no.
And I did clarify to all of you that I had forgotten about it until about noon yesterday. And this is a lot of information to put together. I could have just sent all of this to you guys, and you could have sorted through it to figure out the numbers. But I took the time to put it together so it was easy in one little paper snapshot.
But it still was at 7:00 last night. So I just haven't had time to review it all. Appreciate you putting it together, but.
Okay, the, just, these can be looked up on DLGF by anybody, and it's a statutory requirement by the council.
Great. I will definitely look that up. Thank you.
Appreciate your input, Amy, Susan. Appreciate you being upfront here on this, so thank you. Do we have a second? On approval?
Bob did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the non-binding reviews, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's?
No.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Susan, do we, on the salary ordinance, do we still need to hold on this one for a little bit?
So I have the ordinance that ends in O six. I have that down to just the SRO position and the correction for the matron and Sunny Meadows. Those are the only two on that one. That one can be approved.
Okay, does everybody understand what we're doing here? Going back to the salary hourly wage ordinance, we're approving it for the SRO and for Sunny Meadows. The part-time animal control officer will not be included in this one at this time.
Correct. I have that on a separate one, and I'm still getting information.
Okay, now will that be for today, or will that be at the next meeting? This?
I'll let you know.
It doesn't make it, okay.
I'll let you know later today.
That's fine. So what we'd be voting on is an amendment. Do we have to make, we'll have to have an improvement for the amendment first on this, Don, since we're taking out the part-time animal control officer?
Well, no, because you haven't, no.
We never had a motion to begin with.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're looking at approval or denial of the 2025 salary and hourly wage ordinance amendment. Kalb County Council, ordinance number 2025- OCC day six. And it is amending ordinance number 2024- OCC 10. Do we have a motion to approve this amended ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion by Rick Collins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Rick Ring. Any further discussion for the council? We're approving two, not three. Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the ordinance signify by saying aye.
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 O's? Motion is carried. Thank you.
We suspend the rules and read this on second and third reading?
Okay, thank you.
Second to that motion.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and read on second and third reading by Rick Ring. And a second by Bob Kraft. Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Motion is carried. The rules are suspended. Now we need a motion to approve on second and third reading. Do we have such a motion? Motion by Amy Damski. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick Ring. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2025- OCC six, 2025 salary and hourly wage ordinance amendment on second and third reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on next. Okay. All right, let's, been asked to take maybe a five-minute break here before we get into the next item of business. So if anybody needs a break, this is a good time to do it. Let's, let's come back at. Okay, we'll call the council back in session. Next order of business is the ordinance number twenty twenty-five day OCC day five, creating a county motor vehicle excise tax and wheel tax. And before we get into this, just real quick here... Just like to do a little brief review. At our last meeting, not the, the public meeting, but our last council meeting here, we had consensus from the council to go ahead and pursue looking at a county wheel tax, excise tax here. And at that time, we offered the public an opportunity to speak at that meeting, and then we did have a public meeting that the county or people were asked to and responded well to the, their input on the wheel tax, excise tax. We had many people that spoke in favor of, we had many that spoke against there, and all opinions were greatly, greatly appreciated by the council and taken very seriously. And I just want to say, before we get started on anything here, there is no pre-planned or plan here from the council that has already been drafted and just needs rubber stamp, nothing farther from the truth here. There is nothing that is put together or anything. This is all going to be based on input. We've talked to many people outside the meeting, I know I've talked to a lot of people as well, in favor of and opposed of it there in some degree there, but everybody's input was greatly, greatly appreciated and respected by everybody here on the council, and I speak for that with a hundred percent certainty. But again, I just want to say, there is no preconceived plan here at all, and it's going to be based upon discussion here from the council here today, and that's what this meeting is about. This is not a meeting for public input. This is a meeting here for the council to decide on the wheel tax, and we're going to take a vote on that if we want to pursue the wheel tax here. And we're going to do that here in just a minute here, to see if we're going to carry it on and pursue it, and at what level, or if the county council wishes to not even consider here. So, this is where we're at, this is what we're about, but again, we greatly appreciate and respected everybody stepping forward at the public meeting here with their inputs there. I sincerely mean that there. So, at this time, I think what we need to do first is that we need to decide as a council on a motion either to pursue a county wheel tax, excise tax, and at what level we'll decide it there. But it's, it's an agreement that as a council, we are going to put on a wheel tax, excise tax. Open for discussion, but I don't think we can go any further until we get to that point here, that the council decides, yes, we've talked about it, now we're ready to act at some level here, put this tax on. Do I have such a motion?
I'll move that we continue on with the wheel tax.
Okay, and we have a second. So, we have a motion by Bill Van Wy, and we have a second by Rick Ring, and I would request a vote, a roll call vote on this, Susan.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I've had several...
Twenty twenty-six is not when lighted is going away. Twenty-seven is when that change will come, and we don't have all of the final details of any of that. So, the million dollars that the commissioners use from their lighted funds is still there for twenty twenty-six.
I know someone asked me if we have funds in...
Is your mic on? Can everybody please check their mics, because I keep getting messages that nobody can hear you?
The general fund, do we have money in the general fund or a fund that we can pull from in lieu of putting this in for twenty-six?
It's going to depend...
And I promised I would ask.
Okay, that's going to depend on what kind of dollars you're exactly asking. And then I would need to go through and verify with all of the budgets and what we have spent, haven't spent, what is invested, what isn't invested, what's going to be requested for twenty twenty-six, what isn't. So, I mean, if you're asking for two hundred thousand dollars, I could easily say yes. If you're asking me if there's an extra five million dollars, I cannot answer that sitting here right now.
And I appreciate, I mean, I, I know someone asked in that public meeting, and obviously we weren't answering questions, but since I've had people ask me, and I promised I would ask. Like I said, the public just...
Based, based on what we were given by Ben Parker and the annual maintenance costs that we have in the highway department, his budget has one point nine million dollars, and the lighted money coming from the commissioners was an additional one million dollars. So, that was two point nine that was available, but the maintenance costs were five point one million dollars. So, there was a shortage of two point two million dollars. Now, that's next year, in twenty-seven, there's going to be another shortage of a million dollars because that's, lighted money is not there. So, but I think that if you're going to take the money out of another fund, and again, unfortunately, most people don't understand fund accounting. It's different than accrual accounting that the rest of the world uses. We use fund accounting. You're go, you have money in a number of different funds or pockets that can't be spent, because it's specifically for a particular item. The, the places where you might be able to take it are the rainy day fund, but if you take it from there, you're taking away from the savings for the jail or for major projects. You could, if, you can take it away from the general fund, but then you're going to break what our financial advisor has worked with us over the last seven or eight years to get us into a position of solid footing, and breaking that thirty percent retention that we would need to remain financially sound. So, I, in my opinion, there's not any place else we can take it. It has to come from, from this wheel tax.
I thought it was a question worth asking, because I feel that it's been asked many, many times, and it hasn't been answered for the public. I just, I felt it needed to be a question that...
And this, and when you talk about the wheel tax and the, and the excise tax, you also have to keep in mind cities and towns, because cities and towns don't have any other place they can get additional funding either. And this will allow them to have additional funds that, and in some cases, not a lot, but it will allow Auburn, Garrett, Butler, St. Joe, Spencerville, all of them to have additional road funding that they don't currently have.
But if you live in a town like Garrett, like I do, then there's a high probability that if we do this, we're going to be stacked. So, the citizens in my town are going to pay two extra taxes.
And I know that at the mayor's conference just a few weeks ago, that was specifically brought up to the governor, and the mayors have asked that that provision be changed come January. And no matter what we do today, nothing takes effect until January. The tax doesn't go, the wheel tax doesn't go in place or start until January of twenty-six. And I do think that the, I do think that the legislature will act in some fashion, because right now, the only reason that they would need to pass the tax within the city is to make sure they were available for the second tier of community crossings funding. And if they remove that provision, or say that if your county has it, then you qualify, then it wouldn't have to be stacked. And that's why I'm hoping that all the cities wait and do, wait until we're done here before they make a decision, because even if they have to pass it, if we pass it, they could pass it at the minimum, because they don't have to have it at the maximum or any particular level. As long as they have it, they qualify for that second level of funding.
Sure, but you're still paying a stacked rate. But then you also have the fair share of people who, let's say they retire and they go to Florida. I know several people just in, in my surrounding that will take their car and they'll plate it in Florida because it's cheaper. So, how many of these passenger vehicles per se are we going to lose because they're, they're going to become a Florida resident, even though they're here six months or six months and a day of the year?
And I, and I, and I agree, and I think that's going to happen, and I think the, the large number of trailers, semi-trailers that are listed as being DeKalb County, I don't, I don't believe myself that there are that many that are actually in DeKalb County, but I think that they are, since we are the only one in the area without this wheel tax, if there is a chance at all that they could plate their vehicle in DeKalb County, they would have, rather than Steben or Noble or...
Sure.
Because the, the only two counties in the area, other than us, that don't have the wheel tax are Wabash and Grant. I don't know what Grant did, but I do know that last week, Wabash County passed their wheel tax.
I mean, I understand that it, the, the funding is absolutely needed, but I just, I felt like the public had a lot of unanswered questions. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, nobody wants to pay another tax, myself included.
What funds have we looked at? Have we looked at any?
I haven't looked at it.
What, what other, I mean, again, this is, what are you going to take it from the, you can take, there's forty-five thousand dollars in the historic bridge fund, there's money in, and this, this money can go in Bridge and UMCAP, the money.
I guess that's my question, where else have we looked? What have, what else have we considered besides this tax? The state gave us other options, have we considered those?
What other options did the state give us?
They looked at considering the trustees and townships, what, where can we draw funds from there, there, is there money there that we can draw from? We do have a rainy day fund, I understand that we're trying to save for a jail. However, if we're looking at the importance of good infrastructure for roads, with the claim that some here have made that, hey, we need good roads for people to want to move here, is it worth putting out those dollars or all of those dollars? Can we take some of those dollars and move them over to help do some of the roads right now, to draw in those extra people that we're, that we're talking about? Hey, people will move here if we have better roads. We have two point five million dollars in the rainy day fund right now. Is that acceptable to use? It's just a question, it's just a point. One of the reasons I've consistently voted against abatements is because we've given away, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes that, boy, why they would be really helpful right now. So, is there a way that we could adjust our tax abatements in the future to say to companies who are coming in, I think this was an idea from the Reinharts, actually, of, is there a way that we can structure the abatements in the future to say, we're, we're happy to give businesses an abatement if they're willing to contribute to our wheel fund or our, the wheel, sorry, the road fund?
The highway.
I got wheel tax on the brain. Contribute to our roads. I think there's other places that we can begin to look, and it's, I just don't want to rush to passing this wheel tax if we have other options available. You mentioned investments, is there some money there? Is there interest that we've drawn? So, I think that there are some ways that we can look at it, I don't want to rush to judgment on passing this so quickly. My two cents.
The, I think that, you know, to address a couple of those items, you know, the highway funding doesn't come from property tax. Highway funding comes from the gasoline tax that's given to us monthly by the state. Highway funding comes from the gasoline tax that's given to us monthly by the state. There is, there was a change and it was a cha, a suggestion that came from a meeting that was held in DeKalb County to ask the townships to contribute. However, there is a very strict limit on what they can contribute and they would only have to contribute for their township.
Correct.
Not, you know, they can't, we can't ask Stafford Township to contribute to something in Union or somewhere else.
But it's an option.
Very few of these townships have the additional funding that would cover this.
Have you checked all of those?
And then, I hate to bring this up, but we had a project that was proposed for Wilmington and Stafford Township where the person bringing that in was going to make a rather substantial payment to our highway department to improve the roads in the area. And that project was turned down in total. So, the option has been there, but you guys turned it down.
So has any of the council?
I'm not even gonna justify that with a comment. That's ridiculous.
Has any of the council done anything of what you're asking, Amy? The townships, anything? Does anybody have any of that? Because I feel like when you're sitting here asking these questions, you're looking at me. I'm not going to reach out to.
I'm sorry, I'm not directing anything at you. You're, you're the auditor. I'm directing this to the council. Thank you.
I'd like to just add a couple of things here. One, we, we've been down this road a lot and I've, I've always been a opponent of the wheel tax over the years. I, I stand on my record for a long time. One thing we have to keep in mind now, community crossings phase two, we have to do something here or we're not gonna qualify for that money. Whether we like it or not, you know, that, that's the state backing us in the corner. Couple other things here. If we do have extra money in the general fund, I'm reluctant to want to tap into that because we still have the uncertainty of Senate Bill One, federal funding, federal grants. Federal grants are gonna impact particularly community corrections out here. And we've got several places here that federal funding, we just don't know about. And I'm reluctant to want to pay down or lower what we do have in some savings here. We talked about the jail. We've been talking about the jail for years and, and the costs are not getting any cheaper. And, and that is, you know, rainy day fund is, is gonna be, funds are set back for that there. So there, there's a lot of things out here that are out of our control. And I, I'm one of the last ones to ever wanna put a tax on because I'll be honest, we're putting a tax on and we're not taking anything off. And I have a hard time with that. But we're backed into a corner here with this phase two on a community crossings grant from the state legislation here. And we, we, we don't have to do it, but we're gonna lose some funds. And, and the uncertainty that we have from, like I say, the fallout of Senate Bill One, which is impacting our local budget and with the federal grants and so on, we just don't know yet on that. There's an awful lot of uncertainty out there. I'm not trying to sell anybody on anything. That's my personal take on what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have to. Everybody was, was given, we're given numbers for a minimum, we're given numbers for a maximum. And we're gonna have to take a look and see where we wanna fall into that here. You know, we've had a lot of great input from the county. Amy, I've had several people bounce me about the same questions that you had on that. Can you find money somewhere else there? And it's pretty tough right now.
And I understand that. I just, I felt it was fair to ask. That way people have the answer. And it's not just coming from me or it's not my opinion. I mean, I don't wanna pay another tax. Why would I wanna vote another tax in? I think that's silly, but like you said, we're backed in a corner and unfortunately, we are the ones that have to answer all the questions. And we're the ones that people are frustrated with.
To keep things moving, let's take a look at numbers here so we can see.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Bill made a motion to continue discussing the wheel tax with the council to possibly enact this proposed ordinance. Rick.
Well, do we wanna say to discuss it or to?
Move forward.
Move forward with it, yes. Okay. Just, well, I mean, we're, we're moving, we either move forward, moving forward means that, you know, we look at numbers and come to some kind of an agreement.
And then you're gonna do another motion for a first reading on the actual ordinance?
We have set numbers yet.
I know, that's.
The, the, the reason to move, to have this vote is if it fails, then it's no discussion, we move on.
Right.
If it passes, then we'll continue to look at the numbers.
We've done this before. We've done this before where we decided, we decided last time, no. And we didn't move on. Correct.
We did a consensus.
A consensus, yes.
Now, this is a vote.
This is a vote.
It's a vote to do it.
Yes.
Okay, Collins?
Yes.
Russer? Dembski? Craft?
Yes.
Van Y?
Yes.
Yard?
Yes.
Ring?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is carried six to one. Okay, let's, let's take a look at, start looking at some numbers here just so we can start getting some things on the board here to see where we're at or where we're looking at. And again, nothing has been predetermined. I want everybody to know that there. So Bill, Susan, you gonna?
The minimum for any one category is 750, is that right?
And the excise tax.
And excise.
Okay, okay.
Five dollars, five dollars on wheel size. And I might as well start. I put, I put these numbers together with help of several people and, and everything. I think Jennifer is getting tired of me. And I talked to Rick and talked to several other people. A lot of them say, and I talked to some in Noble County, let's go to the max. I did not give a max on things I didn't think was right. I had a, and I might as well say it, I know he probably will be, shoot me, but I did also reach out to Andrew Provines for this to help me with these numbers on some of the things. And I've asked Jennifer, everything, we've gone back and forth. So this is the numbers I came up with. It gives us, and my goal was to get 1.4 million dollars. This is 1.6. I've talked to several other people. They wanted to lower some of the categories. But my, when I talk to different people, if we don't at least have a minimum of overall $15 to $20, all we're doing is doing maintenance. I mean, then I mean by maintenance, that's painting the sign, painting roads, putting up new stop signs and stuff and not helping our cause. And, and this is what I came up with. I want you to look at it, tell me what you disagree with. Davis called me, told me what he disagreed with me. And, and see what you say. I just, this is a starting point. I'm not here to, to, hey, this is what I, this is what I'm, the only thing I'm gonna pass or not. But this is a starting point I'd like to get for this year. It's not a huge deal. I know we could go up $50 for a car, but I didn't think that was fair. I thought, you know, 35 and so, and that's where I went. So, if you have any questions, you can ask me.
Do we have this to put up or anything, Susan, or?
Buggies are not included.
That, that's a different deal. That's on the commissioners has to put an ordinance on it to increase that. Yeah, that's, yeah. Buggies, the other one was, I gotta ask is side-by-sides, four-wheelers and other vehicles like that which does not have a license. They have a sticker that gives them permission to run on the roads.
Don't worry about Susan because we've got a hard copy. You don't have it.
They have a sticker, yeah. Of course, golf carts, you know, they go across the street, don't they?
Okay, everybody's got the red sheet here that Bill put out with his. And I'm gonna just go through it and we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak where I disagreed with the mayor and maybe we could pick up a few bucks here or there or lose a few bucks. Bill's plan came up with a million and six on potential revenue. Where I disagreed with him was on, uh, let's see. He had, um.
We disagreed on cars went down to 30.
Well, we had the farm semi-tractors. You had them at 40. I, I moved them up to 50.
Yeah.
And that generated an extra $7,050. And then we disagreed on the recreational vehicles. He had it at $40. I said we could do 60. That's an extra $65,640. So instead of $511,070, that generates $534,360. Only change was $10 more on farm semi-tractors and $20 more on RV plates. And on passenger cars, Bill was at, you were at 35. And I think I went to 30.
Yeah.
On that. That generates $917,700 as opposed to a million and 70.
And we also did.
I disagreed on the motorcycles.
We also changed the trucks to 32 off mine, the pickups, didn't we?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Didn't have that.
Okay.
But I had motorcycles and the mopeds from 25 down to 10. So bottom line, the difference is that we went from 1,606 to 1,951. So we actually increased it about $300,000 making those changes there. But the big change was on passenger cars at $30, mopeds, motorcycles at 10, RV vehicles up from 40 to 60 and farm semi-tractors from 40 to 50. That's, that's me, when, what I was thought would be fair. Open for discussion here. But that gets us at 1,951,805.
Question on the historic at the very bottom.
That's the antique plates.
Those, we're not doing anything on those?
Leave them at 25.
It's 25.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, look, clearly you're right. But see, we don't have any that showed up when we, when Jennifer called them up. They didn't show up on her numbers or anything. So we don't know. She didn't have any records of any of them being reported, but that's why she just didn't get it. These, these numbers are all from Jennifer, that lady that talked to us last month.
So people who have collector vehicles essentially would, are plated under what passenger vehicles then, do we think?
It could be under.
There, there are some that are plated under historic vehicles, I'm sure, but as Don is going to say, go ahead. Uh, what is, well, just that there has to be a registration.
There's a different definition too between an historical vehicle and a collector vehicle. A collector vehicle could be a 15-year-old car and be a collectible. So there's a different distinction that's.
It has to be so many years old.
Correct.
25 years old and it cannot be used for regular transportation is the qualifier under the BMV.
We have some. We just don't know how many.
And that would be a $25 plate. If we go with 30 on a passenger car, they could use it then. It'd only cost them $5 a year more by going with a passenger plate at $30 as opposed to 25 for historic.
And it didn't?
For this charge, but it may be to register their vehicle, or the BMV's charges may be different.
Didn't?
For the wheel tax, you're correct, so.
You, you can correct me on this. Didn't Steben say anything over, before 1981 was a historical vehicle?
I don't know. I, I don't.
I thought that's what Rick said, but I, you know, I've talked to so many people, I can't.
It's, it's in the BMV.
I think classic is 25 and, and antique is 30.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the BMV description.
We don't, that's just.
Under the, if you look it up on, on the internet, it'll, it'll tell you what the description is.
Well, I don't need a description. I just.
Well, what I was looking at, at whatever these figures are, I think the thing that we need to work towards for next year, you're close, is for '26, there is a shortfall in what the highway needs of 2.2 million dollars. The numbers you've come up with get close to that. However, it doesn't take into account what's not going to be retained by the county, but what's going to be given to the different cities and towns. Because that, that will, whatever we come up with here, a portion of it will go to cities and towns. So. Be filling out the spreadsheet with the numbers.
What do you think?
You just said you need to change the chosen rates to whatever Bill's talking about. And that'll change the numbers.
A bus, he's got, bus, he's got at 80. A bus church is zero, a farm semi-tractor at 40.
I, I, I propose to move that to 50.
All right, all right. Where are you at now? Where are we at?
Semi-trailer.
Semi-trailer farm, semi-trailer farm, we've got 50.
At 50.
Semi, uh, farm trailer 40. Farm truck 40, recovery vehicle 80. Recreational vehicle 40, but I heard 60. Make that 60.
Move that to 60.
Semi-tractor 80, semi-trailer 80. Trailer greater than 9,000 pounds, 80. Truck.
Less than 9,000.
Yeah, it's. Uh, I, I have a greater, but I don't have, oh, the, the less is in the excise tax in the next level. Truck greater than 11,000 pounds, 80. Truck camper, 30. And then under the vehicle. Uh, no, you go down to the next level in there. No, where, where's, go, uh, go up, go up, go up, go up. It's up there. Passenger vehicles, 35.
Where, I, okay, I, I dropped that down to 30. Where, where are we at on the vehicle?
Well, where's passenger vehicle? Go up again. Yeah, that should be just a minute here. Yeah, that one's cars. That's passenger vehicles.
I put it at 30.
Okay, 30. Then trucks, less than 11,000 pounds, 35. Uh, motorcycles.
10.
10.
10 on the mopeds.
Well, the trailer down there is greater than 11,000 pounds, greater than. Okay, that, the, the less than 3,000 pounds is zero. Less than nine, he's got 15. I think that we can, didn't we zero those out, Bill?
Yeah, that's what he had.
That was something on those permanent places that we've changed the rules. He only had in here, he's got greater than 9,000, he's got at 80. And the next one is supposed to be. And less, less than 3,000, he's got zero. And less than 9,000, he's got 15. We took that one category up above, didn't we? I still got that at 80.
Now, if you scroll down to the bottom there, that's what.
But I still, you guys have given me two different numbers. The bottom, you've given me trailer less than 9,000.
Take that out.
At the bottom?
Yep, take it out. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Yeah, it goes to the top. Trailers, that, uh, that goes to passenger cars. Trailers less than 9,000 is on the excise size. Right, okay, that's, and that's at 15. So if you go down, the ones that are less than 9,000 under that group is already zeroed out. That one, that group's on, one is on the.
What about recreation?
That's what, we had it at 60.
That's what Rick wanted.
I was gonna say, I said eighty, I said go with it, but.
And you're the one that has an RV.
I know.
How about special machine?
Nothing showed up. I don't know what you put underneath it, just leave it as eighty, but they, they don't have, don't.
Oh, what would special machine be, don't mean to, would that be like a motorized crane or something like that, or what?
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Oh, sorry, Susan.
Those titles that are there, and this actual Excel spreadsheet was what we were given by Jeff Peters two years ago or three years ago when we were looking at this before.
So, you want special at forty or eighty?
Eighty. That could be your king crane, so I don't think there's.
All right, so if you now scroll down to the, we've got all those numbers where we want them. Out of that, we would end up with one point seven?
Yeah.
Is that our number, or is our number the one point two?
One point seven is the, is the county.
Portion.
Is the one point two.
Yeah, and the cities and towns would divide up to four ninety-one. And the cities and towns, what they would receive is based on population and mileage. And in a county less than fifty thousand, it's, it's higher on the mileage than the, I don't remember what that actual percentage is. But the, the switch comes at, when you grow over fifty thousand, uh, the division is different. Less than fif- it's a split between population and mileage in both cases.
You ready for some, another totally different opinion?
Sure, Bob.
I just don't throw my input in, I, I've always been.
Of course she does that, do you wanna save that so we can go back?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna edit that. Um, I've always been against wheel tax, I was against it last year, I don't think it's a tax that we can make fair. I mean, one of the things that people said, just try to make it fair, you, it's impossible to make fair, cause you might have a senior citizen that drives a thousand miles a year and a, a salesman that drives seventy-five thousand miles a year, it's just, it's impossible to, for us to track mileage, track damage to the roads, or, we could do some of these calculations and do a little bit of stuff for heavy vehicles and non-heavy vehicles, you still don't know how much one farmer's gonna use his trailer compared to the guy that's doing construction work every single day with his trailer. So, there's no way to make it fair, that's why I don't, I'm opposed to wheel tax. But I do agree that I think we have to, because of what's happened, we have to be prudent and protect our highway department so we don't go backwards. I just have a very different view of what we have to replace. I think we have to replace what we might be losing from last year, not what we wanna build and what we'd like to do to maintain the roads to get them to a certain level. We've already had testimony from Ben last time at the public meeting that we went up in our grade level, in our road grade level over the last five years with what we've been spending. So, I'm concerned about replacing what we might be short this year over last year's budget, not, and so that's the million dollars that, from lighted, for sure. We know, so we really need to replace that million, which we will get if we pass a wheel tax. So, my opinion is that we listen to our constituents, and I kept track, uh, most, there were few against, there were the most in our public meeting said that they understood that we had to do it, but please make it the least you possibly can. And I think we can make up that million by making the very least tax that's on this chart, on the chart, the minimum tax will get us that million back from that extra, that second round of community crossings money. So, there's the million that we lose from light, and so we're already whole, plus if we get three hundred thousand, whatever, from the actual wheel tax and excise tax, that's an extra three hundred thousand additional that we'll have over what we had last year to spend on the highways. So, my premise is a little different, I think it should be the very minimum, I don't like a wheel tax, but it should be the very minimum, and we can look at it next year, like it's, we don't have to pass a certain height, you know, a certain level to try and get certain roads, we're, there's so many unknowns with how much money we're gonna get back from SB one and where it's gonna go, is it gonna come in, is that lighted money? That lighted money may come back into the general fund, and we may have it there to put to the highway. So, let's pass the minimum, so we get that, guaranteed to get that million in the second round of crossings, and then we'll look at it and raise it next year. I don't think it's a one and done thing, we can look at this every year, let's, let's do the least amount, and then next year if we do need to do ten dollars, twenty dollars more, we can add those next year, and if the year after we have to add ten more dollars, we can add to it then, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's just my premise, that we only look at replacing, because of the burden on the taxpayers, we only look at replacing what we're losing from last year.
The, you know, I understand your point about the money from lighted might end up in the general fund anyway.
But we can't guarantee that.
With, well, I can tell you it's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Simply because the changes that have been made to property tax, it's going to reduce, reduce, reduce. And the replacement is going to be a local option income tax, which is what we're gonna have to vote on next year, because, for these replacements. And in addition to the, what I said we were, were needing in the shortfall, just in what we're doing currently of the two and a half million, um, there's thirty-five million dollars worth of projects that Ben has proposed needs to be done that's not accounted for anywhere. And I, one of the, one of the items that's going to have to take place in the next year or two, hopefully, is the, uh, s- the study that needs to be done on that portion of County Road sixty between, um, eleven A and I sixty-nine. They need two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the study to get that project, which was what, twenty-three million dollars in itself? And that'll have to be a federally funded, uh, project, but we have to provide that study first, just like we did with the County Road fifty-six project that just got completed. So, there are many things coming down the pipe that, that are, need to be addressed, and I'm for, let's, we don't know what this will truly generate. I mean, that's until the registrations happen and we have a, a year's worth of data, we don't know what it's gonna generate. But we do know that we're gonna need at least two and a half, two point two million dollars to begin with. That, I do think, we should get as close to that as possible, we don't need to go over it.
So, are you saying that we're, we're gonna be two million, we're gonna receive in his budget, two million dollars less next year to spend than what we?
It's a shortfall with what he gave us of a, a five million dollar annual maintenance, and they get, he gets two million, he, one point nine million dollars from, from his budget and another million from the, from the commissioner's lighted fund, and he's short the other, and they do what they can.
Right.
And if they have a bad winter and it has extra, uh, improvements that need to be made or extra maintenance that needs to be done, it eats, eats into all of that.
I, I understand that the number he gave us, the five million, to do everything we'd like to try and do, but I'm, I'm trying to fill the hole, just the hole from last year. If last year was, or the highway budget was total was four million, and we're, and we are a million short, we fill that million. We don't try to get an extra million, I, I, that's just my position.
Oh, and to add to your comment, if we go with the minimum rate, the money that will come into DeKalb County would be three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
And, and we get the million back from the second round of community crossings that.
Maybe.
Jennifer told us that.
Yeah.
It'll be about a million and a half the first year, seven hundred and fifty thousand the next year, that would level off to be about a million after that every year.
You're, you're automatic in the first la- round.
Yeah, and she said it's automatic.
And the second round is you, it's, it's going to be, um, awarded based on merit. So, how many people are you gonna go up with?
Yeah, we asked that, and she said it was automatic, we don't, it won't be a grant, it won't be anything like that, it'll just.
No, I thought that was level one.
Yeah.
I think that was level one.
It is much smaller.
Yeah.
I thought she said that, I, I agree with you, that's, that's what I thought she said about that.
She said that.
I didn't talk to her this week.
That the second round of community crossings would just automatically be dismersed through the entities that are in, based upon whatever formula, and she had our, she had, if every single entity in the state would, would get a wheel tax, and it was divvied out, we'd get over a million dollars the first year. And then it would go, it was for some reason, because of the delay, it would go down below a million the second year, then it would go back up to about a million.
That's the, it's the funding of the rail, safety, the tracks, and the fifty million for Indianapolis.
So, so my, my premise is, for the taxpayer's sake, that we pass the very minimum that we can, so we can get that million back and, and cover the million we're short. We know we're gonna be, ninety percent sure we're gonna be missing the lighted fund for a million dollars. And it's prudent to try and cover that. But I, I, I don't feel like this might be the right axe or the right way, or the right way to get funds to do all the extra that we wanna do and need, may, may need to do, that's a, another discussion, you know, what, what level do we really want our roads? I mean, we've kinda thrown that back and forth, but we gotta be able to keep at least what we were operating, we can't shut the highway department down next year.
No, no, and don't forget, this money can go to bridges also, and we're short on bridges.
Yeah.
Bridge fund is short, so. Um, so, let's put the minimum, is this a different spreadsheet? That we can put the minimum in?
Well, it's already on there, I think, minimum rates are, it already's in there. Yep.
Well, but, um, that's not gonna show us at the bottom line. Yeah, change, change these.
No, I, I think it does, no, that, that does.
That's the, that's the minimum that's available, or the maximum that's available, if you go to the minimum or maximum.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying.
But it doesn't, it doesn't show at the bottom what we're gonna end up with, it shows.
Right there.
It does, right there. Three hundred and six thousand.
All right, okay.
Plus the million that we get, plus the million we get back.
Check where the, cause I don't, I don't think that's right, check the, check where it's coming up with that number.
That's gonna be eighty percent.
And that's what.
Make sure it's referring back to the right cell.
That's what Bill shows on his minimum as well.
Make sure, just make sure that that's showing back to the right cell.
So, you. My point would be, you would get the million back from second round of community crossings that we're short, that we think we're gonna be short, we're not even positive of that, and you're gonna get three hundred thousand extra to do a little bit more. I know it's not everything that some people want.
It's only three hundred and six thousand.
I think it's the, the, the fairest to the taxpayers if we're gonna pass a wheel tax, the lowest we can do.
I'm all in favor of lower tax rates, without a doubt. My only concern on this, Bob, is it sounds like if we go with the minimum, we're gonna come back next year and maybe ask for a tax increase.
And that's okay, that's our job, if we have to.
At some point in time, it sounds like we're gonna come back for a tax increase, and I'd rather get used to paying this now than come back for tax increase, come back for tax increase, you know, it, it's just.
Yeah.
And that's just my opinion there.
Yeah, I, I would rather not say, well, we're gonna charge it double now because we might need it, and then you're, you're never gonna give it back. You're never gonna lower the tax and say, oh, by the way, we didn't need this much actually, you know, you're gonna spend it and you're gonna never lower that tax. So, I would start at the lowest, and then increase it when we have the real numbers and we know what we're short. If we have to increase it, maybe we don't have to increase it. But I mean, that, I, I, that's.
Susan, run that up to the top again. Right, no, never mind.
I don't need to comment anymore.
Well.
I don't know, I didn't, if I put in seven fifty, I.
Bill's got the minimum on his sheet, he's talking about eighty percent of that, it's about three hundred thousand, three hundred and five thousand, and that's what you'd get at the minimum.
I got, yeah, I got the min, you know, she handed me the first time when we started this whole deal, and it came out to, um, Cal portion of the minimum rate would be three oh eight, one forty. That totaled four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
These are all estimates anyway.
Yeah.
And Jeff Peters' estimate was three oh six, eighty, and so it's very close.
Yeah, it's close, it all depends, it's, it's give or take, you know, you don't know what, uh, you're gonna have.
But then you're getting the million back from second round of co- community crossings, that's new money that we don't have to replace the million from the lighted that we won't get, we think we won't get.
That's up next.
You will get, again, next year, you'll get the lighted money, it's the following year you won't get the lighted money.
So, we'll, but next year, we're just collecting it, we won't have it to spend anyway. The whole next year, we gotta collect all this wheel tax to have.
Now, you'll get, according to, um, according to the state, this money is.
Live?
It's, it's submitted monthly.
Oh, so it's live?
You do not get it every quarter, every six months, you will get it monthly, you will get a, a deposit.
But just of the wheel tax, the community crossings is not till twenty-seven.
The what?
Round two of community crossings is not till twenty-seven.
Right, right.
So, next year, like community crossings, but we'll have the lighting money next year. After that, we won't. That's why I think it's important that we do it, we pass it now, so that, that million lines up with when we're gonna lose the million of lighting.
Well, my, you know, and I understand what you're saying, and I would agree, I don't wanna pay that tax either. I pay, you know, I got three vehicles, I, I, and I don't have, I don't have as many as some people. But, um, I know that the highway department and the need is much, much greater than what you're asking to be replaced. And I think you're just fooling the citizens if you're, if you don't address it right up front. This is what we need, this is where the, this is where the failings are, this is what we're supposed to be doing, let's generate these funds. It is what it is. I, it, at the very minimum, though, we have to have the wheel tax and the excise tax. At, whether it's at the minimum or some other larger number, I'm just saying that we're fooling ourselves if we don't address the total need of the department. And I know the other question that I've, I've had is about the highway department itself. None of this funding can go to pay the bond issue for the new highway department. This money has to go into roads and bridges. It cannot pay for the, the upgraded, uh, highway department.
And there is.
And currently, the highway funds are not paying for the bond. Because people think that, no, it's lighted, people, the commissioners are paying that bond from their lighted funds. But many people think that Ben has this fancy building and now has no money for roads, and that's not true.
Which brings up the other issue, because if, how much is the, how much is the bond issue for that highway department? Each month, each year?
Over eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, it's currently coming out of the commissioner's lighted, it's gonna go away after next year. So, after next year, that bond payment is going to have to come out of the general fund. It's, it's an expense that we've got. Now, the one thing.
We'll have bond payments.
Some of that, some of that can be, there'll be somewhat of a change because you're losing, uh, some six hundred thousand dollars in Sunny Meadows. So, it doesn't all have to come out as new money, there's an expense that is gonna go away.
And.
But community corrections bond is also paid from lit money.
From?
From.
Lighted.
Lighted, from the, the correctional rehab facility.
No, isn't, well, and that's, uh, that's the, the correctional facility tax.
Right.
Which also goes away.
Which is also lit, so, right, all of that will be, but we still don't know, and I was just at conference, we still do not know what the outcome is on those of us that already have the bonds that we're paying, whether the counties are gonna get a keep X amount of dollars so we can make our bond payments, or if that is all gonna come to county general, so we continue to make our bond payments, we don't have any of that, they haven't sorted any of that out yet.
Which is, which is why I'm, let's do the minimum, just to get it passed, get it rolling, get it started, and then next. And then next, I mean, we may have to address it every year, maybe part of our budget every year. Well, is the highway down or up? We, we would do, need to do more, we'll be budgeted. So maybe every year. And I, it's hard. Nobody likes to do that because you're trying to run for office or whatever. But it's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to minimize our taxes and, and raise them only when we have to, only when you have to have a need.
And one of the, and it, it isn't actually SB one. It's, it's House Bill 16 something or other. It might even be 101, the budget. We're gonna have, the, you know, they're reducing the property tax increases every year and replacing it with local option income taxes. And unlike every other local option income tax that's out there, the current state law would require us to vote on that local option income tax every year. So it's, it's, it's not one that's gonna get put in place and then not addressed again, which is what a lot of people think happened. But, uh, you're actually gonna have to vote on it every single year.
And that's something we're probably gonna have to be forced to put in place also.
Oh, yeah. We'll definitely have to have it.
So.
We also have a two million dollar department that's paid out of lighted funds for public safety and sheriff pension. There's multiple things that come out of that lighted monies that I can't just easily tell you there's extra money somewhere when I haven't even been told how the outcome's gonna be on the other end of it.
And, but when you say local option income tax, what that, what, those have specific names and they are gonna go away and they are local income taxes. But the one she's talking about now is the public safety tax, which pays half of, of the central communications. And the 911 fund pays the other half. And then the community corrections tax, which pays for the.
Bond.
Bond for community corrections, which we were hoping would get paid off early enough that we could use that for the jail. Well, now it's gonna be gone. So we're gonna have to come up with a different way to, to pay for the jail.
So the move is a lot. We're gonna call for the question for Bill's numbers first and then Rick's or then, or what are we doing? I mean, how are we gonna do that?
On the floor right now.
No motion.
We're still just taking information and.
Well, I can.
Once you all get done, I wouldn't mind joining in.
I can make.
Also haven't had my opportunity.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Well, I can make a motion, but you can still talk. Go ahead and talk.
I thought we were gonna all give input and we were.
Okay, and I, I didn't mean to.
Okay, right, we're fine there. I'm, I'm fine. I'm not, I'm okay, Bill. Don't, I'm not upset. I've just, um, I've just been listening. There's a lot that's been said that I would have said, probably said, so I don't need to repeat it. We've talked to a lot of groups and we've listened and we've all listened. We had meetings that we listened. We sat with groups and listened. I sat with individuals. There's the no tax people. And when you talk about the facts, there's still no tax, no tax, no tax, no matter what. There's been some that have talked to me as we've talked through it. They've changed their minds and said, well, yes, I understand now why you would wanna do that. I certainly don't wanna be a tax person. I don't wanna add that. I love this comment, be fair. Be fair is, is all perspective, but, but being fair, um, I don't think it's fair to do the max. But I also, Bob, sorry to disagree there, but I, I don't agree that it would be fair to just start at the absolute minimum there. If we're gonna do something, let's do something that's, that's fair, responsible. It puts some monies into this. And I do agree with, with Bob, Bob said, um, so, you know, several people had advised me, not in this group, but outside of this group, go for the max, go for the max, you know, kick, do it now so you don't have to pay for it later. You don't have to come back and make a decision later. Politically, they'll forget about it by spring. Oh, just all those types of things. I've heard some of that. I, I don't, I don't agree with it. I think that, that we don't need to do the max now. Some surprising groups, uh, the farmers being most of, not all of them. I don't speak for all farmers, but the ones that talked to me, they were all for, you know, go, go for it and get our roads done. That was surprising to me. I thought that would be a totally different response from that. Um, I don't agree with taking funds from other services. I don't think that's the, the right, the way to go. I understand how that makes sense, uh, in, in the minds of some, but it doesn't. I don't think it's the right thing for us to do. I think we need to find fair numbers. Uh, those fair numbers are, again, I don't think they're the max. I don't think they're the minimum. I'm not trying to be middle of the road on this or on the fence. I think it's somewhere maybe just above some of the lower numbers as, as Councilman Kraft said. Um, whether it's 20, $25 vehicle in that lower bracket, you know, 40 to 50 dollars on the upper bracket. Um, but if we find something in there and then we do come back, we know, we'll know a year from now, um, what we need to do. Do I think we oughta make, wait a year from now to make our decision to get this going? I don't. I think that it's time. We've kicked, we have discussed this. This isn't new. This isn't fresh. This isn't something that's just been on our plates, um, this last 60 days. It's been on our plates for this. We've all had time to think about it, discuss it, put input. The reason we said no is because we didn't think the time was right. I would be a, a yes to move forward on it, like I said, but I would be a no for the max and I would be a no for the minimum.
And, and agree with you. That's what started to push was the farmers.
Mm-hmm.
Wants to run these roads.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a lot of roads out there that, and, you know, that needs some maintenance done. And I know that it's not, um, going to get done even in the next five years because there's other things. Uh, and I've already, I've, my road, do not touch my road because it's not rough enough now. These cars drive too fast as it is. And, but I know there's roads I travel on that needs work that I know is, it's not on his schedule for five years. It's gonna, and then also have a bridge I cross that has a weight limit. We need to update that because we can't run our farm trucks over it. I, I'm gonna start it out. I said, I'll make a motion and Rick's.
Wait, did you have numbers you wanted me to put in here?
Um, not specific numbers. No, I mean, I, I kinda said, you know, in the lower bracket, 20 to 25 dollars. Um, yeah, on the upper bracket, kind of a 50 dollar across the board. Um, I don't know that we have to break every single thing up there. I think we keep it simple and we come back and we evaluate it.
Okay, so if I do 50 at the top and 20 at the bottom, then it comes to 1.177 with 853,000 for the county.
So we're just over a million at that number.
Plus the million.
In total.
Plus the million we automatically get.
Plus the million we automatically get, which means at the end of 2026 that we're not going to be, um, upside down devastated within our highway department. We're gonna be real close.
That just changed when you clicked that.
There we are.
What?
Roll that up.
Up?
Yeah, I wanna see the, I wanna see the city, the, um, passenger vehicles, the S, excise piece. So you're setting the excise piece higher than the wheel tax piece? I mean, the, the, the excise, excise vehicles are gonna be less damaging to the roads than what the heavier vehicles are.
So everybody that has a car, right? Just so you know, that's 50 dollars a car.
I'm sorry. I, I, when I said the lower bracket, I, I meant here.
Backward?
On the, on this, on Bill's sheet. I'm sorry. I was referring to that.
So you wanna.
Passenger and below, yes. We just got it upside down.
What's happening?
I, sorry. I was referencing this sheet. I'm sorry. I, I can't even see, hardly see the chart from here, so.
I didn't, I didn't think that's what you.
Thank you for clarifying. No wonder that's confusing to you. Absolutely.
I understood exactly what you were saying.
Thank you, Don. Thank you. Yes, yes. Sorry about that.
I vote against that number right there that goes all the way across the screen.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes. Yeah, that would be ostrous if I'd have said the opposite. I'm sorry that I communicated that way.
The vast majority and the most money is coming from people with cars.
Yeah, correct. At a, at a.
That's the most of the money.
But it's.
You know, we're talking about financially devastating people. I have an 87-year-old mom. I, I know families that, I mean, 20 dollars is not going to devastate our families.
Jump back up there. You really don't wanna do 25 dollars on a motorcycle or a moped, do you?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I really don't. I mean, I mean, we can, we can move that number, of course. I'm just, I don't have a problem with it.
She's got 20 up there. Motorcycles.
Did you not say 20?
Yeah, I just said 20.
She did. And I was thinking the, the minimum for motorcycle and, and, or at least for mopeds.
Okay, so flip it around, then you're at 2.9 million with 2.1 million for the county. No?
Yeah, why did it go up instead of down?
Well.
Yeah, it should be about, uh, 611,000 from Bill's numbers.
Yeah.
That's probably closer to the. Just because of.
But these amounts are using these cells up here, so I have to. If this one is correct, then you're at 1.3 million with 995 for the county.
It's got 22.2. Am I reading that right? And 79, that's not a hundred. Wouldn't this be 100%? Looks like it's 101, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Fair?
Yeah.
No, the, well, that's, that's the, um, that, that's either the roads or the population split.
That's the percent that each town gets.
Okay, I get you.
That's the allocation.
I'm, I'm not.
Your numbers don't add up. I see what he says, 20.
I, using the spreadsheet that you gave me? So then are none, then none of these are.
Probably a rounding issue.
That's close enough.
So we've got about five proposals, Susan. You know, Rick's is about 995,000 for the county, 1.374 million total. What about, can you give us what Bill's was and Rick Ring's and so we can just have some comparisons here? So this was.
I don't have a, I don't have a proposal.
Okay, I thought you did. I saw your name up there.
I mean, I guess right now it's between.
That's.
Phil Van Wy and, and what, uh.
So Bill's was.
So.
Or Bob Kraft. He had a, also a proposal.
Bill's is 2.117, 465, uh, total, and 80% of that would be the county's portion.
So what was that again on Bill? The total was how much? Uh-huh.
And then about 80% of that is the county. So about 1.68 million would be the county's. These are all estimates we're dealing with, but they're close.
Yeah, those numbers came from, um, Jeff Peters as far as the number of vehicles.
Yeah.
Came from Jeff Peters from a number of years ago when we did this before. And if you watch the LTAP video, they did this process in 2017 and they said unless your county has had rate increases or decreases in population, the numbers stayed pretty much the same for the vehicles and the vehicle type. But again, we're, everything we're doing is working off an estimate.
So if, if there's somebody else that wants to make comments or recommendations, uh, I'm willing to make a motion for the lowest. We can vote on that. And I have no, I'm not personally hurt if, if it goes under, but then we can vote on the next one and vote on the next one. I mean, we gotta take our personal opinions out of it and just say, this is what I think. I'm gonna make a motion and vote on it. If it's voted down, we move on. So I'll make a motion for the minimum, uh, to pass a wheel tax for the minimum rates as shown on the chart. 7.5 on the surtax and I think it's 5 dollars on the other one.
If I second that motion, do I have to vote in favor?
You second? No.
I'll second it.
Okay. I, I just, the numbers up here, so we're looking at, okay, this is the minimum right here, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, um, pass a wheel tax at the minimum levels. That's everything across the board at the minimums. Okay, we have a motion by Bob Kraft. We have a second by Amy Prosser. Any further questions, discussions on this from the council?
Regarding neighboring counties that have this already, do we know what, where the current, our neighboring counties stand as far as when they passed theirs? Did they pass it at the minimum level and have they been able to sustain that? Or did they just go for the max so they didn't have to worry about it later? I guess I'm curious.
We have a couple neighboring counties here that have been at the max.
It's stupid.
They've gotten, they've gotten used to that level.
Yeah.
And they are wanting an excess now. They wanna go over and above because.
Can't sustain.
They've.
And that, I guess.
I don't say they're broke, but they've overspent it.
Yeah, and, and then, uh, Noble County has set it at 60 dollars on, uh, trucks and everything on, uh, yeah, 60 dollars.
How long has Noble had theirs? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know.
Do you know, Susan?
How long they have.
I haven't. It's been a while.
There are several counties in the state that are at the max and they want to go to an excess.
Yeah.
I know Wells County is also at the max. And the wheel tax has existed since 1980.
Right.
So we've turned it down throughout that entire time. I don't know. I think that Wells County's had it at least 10 years that I'm aware of. But I don't think they pass it at the.
2011.
2011?
And they said, they started at the minimum and they.
And they boosted it up, yeah.
Noble County has been since twenty twenty.
Mr. President, can I amend my motion? I'd like to, I'd like to amend it just to say, do the minimum and look at it a year from now, you know, at budget time next year to see if it needs to be increased.
Do we have consensus on the amending of motion of where we would look at it the second year? Consensus from the county?
I'll second that.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that or just take consensus?
We got a motion and a pending, and a second. We got, we gotta vote on that first.
Well, we would need to basically defeat the motion and then do the amended.
You gotta vote on the motion. I don't, I won't tell you what you gotta do.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, we have a motion that's duly seconded here to go with the minimum amount on the wheel tax. It does not include any amendments here. So, let's call for a roll call vote on this, Susan.
Collins?
No.
Prosser?
Vote yes because I'm trying to protect the citizens from the maximum amount, so I will vote yes on this.
Dembski? Kraft?
No.
Yes. No.
Or three.
Curious. Motion is carried on the minimum amount on the wheel tax.
Nothing stops us from looking at it again next year.
No, no.
It's just part of business.
Okay.
Now, I would, uh...
Because this has to have second and third reading?
Well, we gotta, we gotta...
We don't even have a first reading.
With everything in it, so...
Okay.
Um, and I, we're gonna have to... But you can pass it, we're gonna have a special meeting, I think, to pass the ordinance.
They don't have...
If you wanna do it this year. That's the other thing that has to be decided.
By September one.
If you want it for...
Another second, a special meeting to have three votes if they're signed in.
What's that?
We'll have to have a second special meeting.
Well, you can...
The first one and then a second one.
Can't they do the first reading on the minimum, uh, for ordinance?
I suppose we could do that even though we don't have...
What do I have?
We have the form.
Yeah.
We could, the minimum is, we know what the minimum numbers are, so we could do the first reading today.
And then do a special meeting for the second and the third.
So, the motion would be to pass, uh, ordinance number five?
Twenty twenty-five dash OCC dash five on first reading.
On first reading at the minimum rates.
Do we, do we need, we've, we've already voted on that.
We voted on the rates. We haven't voted on the ordinance yet.
Correct.
We need...
So, I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance that was presented to us with the minimum rates filled in for the amounts. We had, we have an ordinance here.
You're making a motion to pass the Calhoun County Council ordinance twenty twenty-five dash OCC dash five, an ordinance creating a county motor vehicle excise, surtax, and wheel tax at the minimum amounts on first reading.
Yep, that's what I moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second by Rick Ring. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of, of passing ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash OCC dash five, creating a motor vehicle excise, surtax, and wheel tax on first reading signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried, uh...
I had two against.
We had two opposing, so five to two.
Okay.
Okay, now, we need to schedule a meeting, come back for the second and third reading.
Correct.
Just a second.
Pardon?
Just a second.
Forty-eight or seventy-two hours?
Forty-eight. So...
Just we have to have forty-eight hours notice.
Yeah, I have to be able to give it forty-eight hours notice. So, the soonest is if I put it out like now, the soonest you could do it would be Friday, like at noon.
Do we have to wait forty-eight hours?
Yes.
I ha, I have to have that time to notice to meet statute for my meeting requirements.
We'll look at Friday. We'll look at Monday, the eighteenth.
The eighteenth will have to be in the afternoon because we have commissioners' meeting.
Well, Friday would have to be a afternoon meeting too, though.
Right, because of my advertising requirements. The eighteenth is because of commissioners already scheduled.
What's council's pleasure? This Friday afternoon or... How did Tom win? Friday, Friday doesn't work well for me, but...
When's the next day?
Well, Monday, the eighteenth or nineteenth or...
What time?
Well, it could be, it'd have to be Monday. It'd have to be in the afternoon because they have a council meeting here in the morning.
Commissioners' meeting.
Commissioner's meeting, I'm sorry. Monday.
Monday, early afternoon, but after three.
Okay, one o'clock?
I can't do Monday, though I don't think I need to be here. I mean, I'll be available by, by phone, so...
Okay.
I'll have the ordinance with the numbers in and so forth.
So, Monday, the eighteenth at one P M?
Sure.
Okay, is that consensus?
Does that work for everybody?
Okay, that, that should be, that'll be short. So, Monday, August eighteenth, one P M. Okay, we got a couple other things here that we need to discuss. Um, one, we have coming up September third and fourth, our regular meetings with the budget public hearing. First reading starting at five P M. Are we still in agreement on the five P M? Does the council wish to change those times? We're open for discussion.
That's day one only?
Day one. I, I agree with day one, but day two, we have too many tough budgets coming in here, and we're gonna have to pull ladies and gentlemen's in to discuss their budget. And I don't think it's fair to, uh, the department heads to have to come in at nights, at night, to discuss some of these budgets that we have questions on because that'll limit our time with our questions. I wouldn't be all right in the first one, but the second day, I think we should have it during the day.
We may be here a while.
I agree with that because that, otherwise we could really shorten ourselves on time. If we start it in the morning, we can go all day if we have to.
That was one concern that we had because our budget hearing days are normally so long.
Yes.
We were worried about them starting at five, I mean, compared to how long we normally work through the day.
So...
But five o'clock on the first day is our regular, is that our regular, um...
It's our regular meeting follow, like, that it goes right into your budget work.
So, here, you know, we had a regular meeting. That'd be eight o'clock before we'd start any budgets.
Could be.
Well, don't worry. I'm not scheduling a lot in your regular meeting that day because we're gonna need to offer budgets.
Do we wanna change and, and do both-day meetings?
On the third, but I could do on the fourth. I'd like to do the fourth day meeting.
So...
I'll move that we keep the first day evening meeting, and then the second day, we'll have it through, through the day on the fourth.
Starting at eight-thirty?
At eight-thirty or eight?
Well, there's drainage board that day at eight-thirty.
How long does that usually last?
Sometimes it's not long. I can...
What, uh, what is those days? Are there Monday and Tuesdays?
Wednesday and Thursday.
That's, Labor Day is the first. So, it's, it's a short week anyway.
Well, Thursday, what time do we start?
We start at nine o'clock?
I don't know. I'm finding out. It's drainage board. I don't do anything with those meetings.
Bill, do you know how long your drainage board, are you on the drainage board? How long does those meetings usually last?
You work half hour or two?
That doesn't...
Well, it's all gonna depend on what topics they have. There's, I mean, he doesn't have the agenda yet.
He don't help anybody, yeah.
Is there any place we can meet while they're meeting and then move into here later? That would be convenient because you're gonna have to have access to the computer and everything else.
My office?
Well, we can schedule it ten o'clock. We can go right at ten. Is that fine? You know, this plan hopefully done. If not, we'll wait until they're done.
We already added a bunch of hours to it because we're gonna go all day if we have to.
Yeah, so, it'd be better to start at five o'clock.
I'd say we start at nine, and if we have to push it back thirty minutes, we can.
Okay.
Plan it sooner than later.
Surveyor's office is guessing they'll be done by nine-thirty, so I wouldn't start it anytime before nine-thirty.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we're looking at September third meeting beginning at five o'clock. It's on a Wednesday. And then on Thursday, on the fourth, we're looking at nine-thirty A M.
The, um, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm fine with that, but that second day, we could also meet the next week. We could meet Monday the next week.
Okay, so Monday, the eighteenth at one P M, you're, what'd you say? You're good with that, Rick, or?
The eighth.
The eighth, the eighth.
Oh, oh, okay.
September.
September, okay.
If we, if we can't make Thursday work, we can do Monday.
Okay.
But if we can make Thursday work, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I got you. Do we need a motion or just consensus?
I just need to know when to advertise.
I prefer to do Wednesday, Thursday. That way, if we have continuing conversation, that we're knocking it out and we're not starting over on Monday.
Okay, so Wednesday at five P M, Thursday at nine-thirty A M. So, consensus from the council? We have consensus. We're not done yet. So, um, Mr. Bacon, you wanted to discuss something about sewer board?
Did you say nine-thirty?
Is he here?
Did you say nine-thirty?
Nine-thirty.
Martin?
I'm sorry?
Martin, Don Martin.
Oh, Mr. Martin, I'm sorry. Would you turn the microphone on and identify yourself, please?
Blue lights on, meaning it's on?
Just turn, is it on?
It's on. I'm Donald Martin. I live at six seven five Forest Day Road one in Spencerville, Indiana. Um, after listening to what's going on today, my promise seemed pale in comparison with what's being discussed, but I also emphasized the idea that, um, the sewer district has raised the rates over a hundred percent for, for us, and with the wheel tax coming through, there's a lot of people in St. Joe's Spencerville area that are on a limited incomes and have a hard time paying the bills. I tried to get on the sewer district to make it, to help make a decision. They've been asking for volunteers since the beginning of the year. I sent a message to Rick Collins, and I never heard back from him, so I don't know, an email back in April? That's okay. I caught you at a bad time. And then I found out at the last sewer meeting that they assigned Lynn Reinhardt, and I never heard back any information saying one way or the other. I guess, I mean, I should have pursued it more, but the question I have is, I, I talked to Lynn. There was a lot of confusion between the commissioners and the councilmen who actually has authority over the sewer district. And I finally figured out that it appears to be you people. So, I was wondering if we can hold you guys accountable to this decision being made. Decisions were made at the sewer board, excuse me, that industry experts questioned, and the sewer district cannot come up with any alternatives. When the budget came in from three and a half million to almost seven million dollars, they just said, well, we just gotta raise rates more. They're talking about forgiving some of the, or reducing the rates to some of the places people that asked, but that's just gonna spread out about other people. So, I guess the basic question is, not to go into a long story, who has authority to tell the sewer district board to do things differently? That's the question.
Not the council. The council appoints. The commissioners here appeals those rates, but other than that, they're, they're a separate political entity.
They're not elected officials, though. They're appointed, as you say.
They're appointed.
So, how do we, how do we hold them accountable?
There's the court system holds people accountable, but, uh...
So, basically, they have a monopoly. They can do what they wanna do, and people, they've had industry experts come in and tell them, what you're doing is wrong. Butler, uh, said you can tie into us and probably be a lot cheaper, and the district came back and said, no, it's too expensive. They said, where's your, where's your information to show it's more expensive to tie to Butler? It was just hearsay. I wanna make it part of the official record is, I think that the underlying purpose of the sewer district board is that Harry Riley is one of the workers, and his father instituted that, and he actually said in one of the meetings, his goal is basically to keep the legacy of his father alive. So, he, he's looking at ways to have the people of Spencerville and St. Joe pay for the bill to keep the sewer district going when it might have been more economical to tie into Butler. But they never presented any results. The Nucor sewer expert even asked these questions, and they couldn't answer the questions. So, the real question I had was, and you've answered the question, is we can't hold them accountable. They don't answer, you, you appoint members to the board, but we can't, we can't tell them they're doing something wrong. They have, they have a monopoly on what they do. Is there, am I looking at it wrong?
Restricted by the law.
And that's what...
What they can and can't do.
And we had two petitions. First petition was, they did do, violate the law where they tried to raise the rates last November, and they did illegally. They didn't get a proper notification. We did another petition when the contract is gonna be signed in June, and I, it's due to that petition. And I didn't realize Indiana code required both a printed name, a signature, and address, and we just got over thirteen, ten percent signatures, and so the petition is thrown out. So, we tried different ways to get them to look at the answers, loo, look at different ways to approach this, and, and they just say, we're not going to. We don't, we don't have to. We have the authority to do what we wanna do, and we're not gonna change. So, you guys are saying you don't have any, any authority over the sewer district?
Other than they appoint a member to this one.
Yeah, we appoint one member.
Yeah. Did I even volunteer? Yeah, I talked to him, yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying that he's, he's bad or one way or the other. I guess the concern was that I requested, I actually sent an email to, um, Rick Collins in April, asking what's the process to get it signed. I never heard back. I talked to the sewer board in April also, and they said, you'll never be put on the sewer board because we don't like you. So, it's a good old, good old boy network.
They don't. It's not their decision. They may have an appointment. I don't know, but the council has one appointment, and they make that decision.
Yeah.
I don't think they make it based upon who they like or don't like. First, there's a limited pool that live in the sewer district.
It's a what?
There's a limited pool of people that live in the sewer district or have property within the sewer.
And, and that pool is diminishing. People are moving out. People are, it's going, getting smaller and smaller all the time. In the thirty years it's been there, we have less customers now than what it started out with. Uh, Nucor, I don't know if you've heard the figures or not, their sewer rates with this new, um, loan, I guess we could say, rate went up almost four hundred percent from what they were paying before, almost four hundred thousand dollars a year. They're actively looking at legally how to get out of the sewer district. Nucor. They're on, we, we were, we were told that one of the questions we asked was, why can't you tie into Butler? And they said, we have to go underneath the railroad tracks. So, I said, okay, that'd be too, they said it'd be too expensive. And the next meeting, they say they're having trouble with the trailer park in, in St. Joe, not paying their bill. They're on the other side of the track. So, they have run underneath the track. They, they, they changed the story to their own benefit. So, I, I guess I'm just venting more than anything else. This is kind of frustrating to, you know, with possible wheel tax coming up now. People got one or two cars, it's gonna be an extra hundred dollars a, a year. Sewer rates are a hundred and fifteen dollars a year now, a hundred and five. Does it?
Yeah, it's a rate for...
Depending what vehicle you have. Depending what vehicle you have.
No, it's all vehicles.
The minimum is seven dollars and fifty cents.
For automobiles.
Yes.
Pickup trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Light vehicles, it's all seven dollars.
Just, things keep going up, and most people that I talk to in Spencerville are on limited incomes. They don't have more money coming in. But you're saying legally, there's nothing you guys can do, is what you're saying? Other than appoint, and you appointed Lynn, which I'm saying that's probably good. Hopefully, he has, I, I mentioned at the meeting when he had, I said, hopefully he has independent thought because you appoint one person, what about the other four that are on the board? How'd they get on the board? No, they said they don't.
Kind of St. Joe, Mike. Thanks, Pat.
Okay, I wanna kind of move this along. Mr. Martin, you know, in regard to your sewer board down there, you know, you have the right to show up to meetings, and I'm sure they...
I am.
You have meetings, and you can protest their vote or whatever and make people aware of there, but as far as the council having a hand in that or anything, we don't. as far as the council having a hand in that or anything, we don't, as our representative stated there, but.
That was, that was the main purpose, come here and find out what, what authority you had over the sewer district, that was the main purpose of the session.
So, I think, I think our council gave you exactly where we stand and what our obligations are, what we can and we can't do. But you as a citizen certainly have every right to be there and challenge along the way.
I'm essentially a small person compared to what they wanna do that, it's not like the only thing we really do, like I said, get a lawyer and try fighting it at court. Is what it sounds like, you, you, you're basically. Yeah. Okay, that's, I just wanted to go on record as saying we're not happy with what's going on down there and a lot, a lot of people aren't happy.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and really do, thanks. Okay, does anybody have anything else to come before the council? Hearing nothing, do we have?
Make a motion that we adjourn?
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
O's? And we will see you back here on Monday, August eighteenth at one o'clock for a second and third reading.